I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster is not here. Does she have an excused absence?
Yes, she noted earlier that she would not be able to attend this evening.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Weber?
Here.
Commissioner Zuber here, and Chairman Green?
Here. And, of course, we have our community planners, Patrick Sloan and Aaron Susskow, and all of you all, and all of those who will be watching on television eventually as this is recorded. And those are in Zoom land. I don't know if we have anybody out there, but welcome. Tonight, we have an agenda of six items, but before we get to that, we did have a meeting in March, March 7th. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the March 7th meeting?
I would like to approve, I would like to move to approve the minutes, but I would like the section on the bylaws to reflect the fact that I suggested we not have so many hours of continuing at required, and I didn't see that in the minutes. Other than that, with that amendment, I...
That would be amendments to the minutes? Okay, so we have a motion to approve March 7th minutes. Do I have support?
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Let's do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I just need to recruise myself. I was not here for the meeting.
Same. All right, let's move on. All right, so we have, as I had mentioned, an agenda of six items, six regular items. Do we have any late additions from staff to add?
No changes.
Changes? Anything from the commission to add? Anything? All right, do I hear a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved. Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Egenberger to accept tonight's agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, first agenda item tonight is a public hearing. It's the Zippy Car Wash, and for, we have two public hearings tonight, and so I'll just say this one time, and that is if there is anything to say other than the project representatives, then we do ask that you make sure that you fill out the sign-in sheet at the table there, and when you get to the podium, we'll need your name and address, and then whatever concerns you. So with that said, we'll go to the Zippy Car Wash, where we're considering a special land use. This is for property which is located on the south side of Michigan Avenue, west of Beck Road, and the proposed use is an automatic car wash. Patrick, you want to give us more detail?
Yes, thank you. As you noted, this property is on the south side of Michigan Avenue, and it's just west of Beck Road. It's a corner piece at the intersection, and the property is owned C3 Regional Commercial, and parts of it were recently rezoned to C3 to allow for the special land use application to be made. The applicants have submitted special land use plans, and the plans submitted include more details than are typically seen on a special land use plan, which allows us to get into more site plan related details, which we do in our staff report. In our staff report for this, it's a five-page report, so we won't get into every topic, but some of the main topics first is the development standards for automobile wash establishments in the zoning ordinance. There are several standards there where car washes have to meet the standards. One of the standards is that the building should be oriented so that the bays, particularly the self-serve auto washes, do not face onto adjacent thoroughfares unless screened by an adjoining lot or building. This is not a self-serve auto wash, so it doesn't meet that higher threshold. The standard states that the building should be oriented, not necessarily that they have to. In this case, because it's a corner lot, it would be extremely difficult to try to get a car wash where there's not at least one bay door that's facing an intersection. So in this case, what they have is they have the eastern door is facing onto Beck Road. It's quite a bit of distance from Beck Road, and there are 10 more evergreen trees along the Beck Road frontage to help screen the door from Beck Road. At the time of site plan review, there will also be a requirement for a berm, so a berm in addition to tightly spaced and staggered evergreens will have a shielding effect for the bay door onto Beck Road. Finally, on the east side of Beck Road, the use on the east side is a credit union, so it's another commercial use. So the impact of that bay door facing Beck Road to the east should be minimal. The access drive to the business will be on the far west side of the site. There will be only one access proposed from Michigan Avenue, and it's as far west and away from the intersection of Beck Road as possible, so that there's as little conflict with the intersection as possible. At this time, there's no access that is proposed onto Beck Road, so the access is proposed to be exclusively on Michigan Avenue. As I previously stated, for the landscaping and screening, the site plan review will eventually require a full landscape plan, but what's on the screen in front of you is a landscape plan that's designed to comply with Article 5 of our zoning ordinance, and it shows the frontage trees, the general trees, parking lot landscaping, et cetera. And on the top of the page, which is the east side of the site, it shows additional evergreens between the east side of the developed site and the eastern lot line. Next, with sidewalks, there are adjacent sidewalks to the site to the west and to the south, and the applicants propose to construct sidewalks along both the frontage of Michigan Avenue and the entire frontage of Beck Road, of the parcels frontage adjacent. That will fill a very large sidewalk gap of about 1,278 feet, so doing the sidewalks on a corner lot is pretty substantial in terms of filling gaps and building out that sidewalk network. The last part of the report that I want to touch on is the special land use standards of review in Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance. We find that the proposal does meet the standards of review in the zoning ordinance, and as a result, we recommend approval. There is one item that we did want to touch on, and it's the last point. It's on the top of Page 5 of our review letter, and it's a standard in the special land use section of the ordinance where not only is a proposed use expected to enhance the economic well-being and welfare of the township, but a use can also not result in excessive duplication of a use in the community. And in a community like Canton, that's a very difficult thing to show how something would result in excessive duplication, or wouldn't in that case, just because of how large of a community we are and how many different commercial uses that we have. There is another car wash located on the south side of Michigan Avenue, about 1.1 miles east of the proposed use, and there's another car wash proposed on the north side of Michigan Avenue across from this existing car wash. So there is duplication of the use on Michigan Avenue, but there's duplication of many uses on Michigan Avenue, such as grocery stores, merchandise stores, clothing stores, gas stations, restaurants. So just because there's duplication of a use doesn't necessarily mean, doesn't necessarily mean that it results in excessive duplication. And in the case of car washes, one example is on Michigan Avenue in Saline. Zippy Auto Wash has an existing car wash business there that's less than a half a mile from two other car washes in Saline, which has much less commercial development than we have in Canton in terms of some of our big box stores and a lot of our other duplication of uses. And in the case of Saline, we're not aware of any excessive duplication of the car wash service along that specific area of Michigan Avenue. So there's nothing in the materials or otherwise where we see where, in this case, where there's any kind of excessive duplication just because there's other car washes in the area. So that concludes our report. Our recommendation is approval of the special land use for the automobile wash establishment as illustrated on the special land use plan for the reasons stated in our report, subject to the items noted in our review being addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, and subject to all state, county, and township requirements. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Again, this is a public hearing, so let us open the public hearing. And is the project representative here today? All right, if you want to come up and, while you're going up there to the dais, you want to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hello, sir.
Hi, good evening.
Good. Did you have anything that you want to add to what Patrick said?
Sure, yes, I'd be happy to. So pleased to be here this evening. I'm Corey Weaver. I'm joined by my wife, Michelle Weaver. We're the owners of Zippy Auto Wash. We're also joined by Greg Heim from Vancen O'Brien. Vancen O'Brien is our design-build firm. They've built four of these Zippy auto washes for us in the greater Ann Arbor area. So, yeah, we're pleased to be here and looking forward to your input on the project. I'd like to thank Mr. Sloan for all of his input on the project to date. Been extremely helpful, and it's been a pleasure working with the planning staff here. As background, my wife and I are Saline residents, so we've lived in southeastern Michigan for about 30 years now and have owned and operated the Zippy Auto Wash business for about 15 of those years. So we have four entirely new sites in the greater Ann Arbor area. We have four more that are under contract and in planning, one of which we're discussing this evening, and a couple more that we're looking at after that. We've fortunately earned the reputation as the area's highest quality auto washes in the greater Ann Arbor area, and are excited to bring those services to Canton Township also. You've received our detailed project presentation, I believe, from Mr. Sloan electronically. That goes into more detail about some of our priorities in terms of customer service, environmental responsibility, philanthropy, et cetera. If I can, I'd like to just take a few minutes and say a few words on those priorities, and then...
Go right ahead.
Questions. So our business priorities are relatively simple. You know, first, of course, to provide the highest quality auto wash services to the communities in which we operate, to provide outstanding customer service to all of our guests through our professional staff and facilities, to invest in the most environmentally responsible wash processes, facility design, and site functions, so that we can minimize our resource footprint in the communities that we operate in. And then lastly, to invest in those communities with easy and profitable fundraising programs that basically enable us to provide, you know, opportunities for local organizations to raise money. So to date, we've donated over a quarter million dollars in wash services to over 100 local organizations in the community that we operate in, in the greater Ann Arbor area. Most of those organizations receive annual donations that they're able to offer at live auctions, silent auctions, et cetera, and ends up being a good source of income for those local charitable organizations, so. Patrick, if it's possible, can we pull up some of the renderings from the PowerPoint?
Sure.
We also have some hard copy here also. If you have a good view of both screens, it may...
Would those be the ones that you had emailed recently?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll bring those up here. Just take a moment.
Sure. Page 22, I think, is what is the beginning of the rendering section. But while Patrick's pulling that up, perhaps, you know, question of duplication of services...
Let me stop you right now. Is your microphone on?
I think it is. I'm just not close enough to it.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Pretty sensitive.
Perfect. So, yeah, we have half a dozen renderings here, just to kind of give you a flavor for what we're proposing in terms of the site design. So the proposal is a modern express exterior auto wash. We define that as a conveyorized auto wash with automatic pay terminals, unlimited plans, free vacuums, free floor mat wash and dry, and other complimentary services. This proposed site plan consists of approximately a 4,900-square-foot building, 150-foot automated wash process, two pay terminals located behind the building, eight vacuum spaces also located behind the building, as well as customer-employee parking also located behind the building. Patrick, if you flip to the next, give you, you know, a perspective from the east. This is looking at the entrance end of the auto wash. So you've had a chance to see it, excuse me, from the west and the east. It's a conservative architectural design. We utilize all premium materials, metal roofs, split-faced masonry materials, et cetera. Next slide. Bird's eye view, looking from essentially Michigan Avenue. We call this our customer-friendly building orientation. It allows customers to enter and exit very easily in a counterclockwise flow pattern, so essentially there's never crossing traffic, very easy for customers to get in and out on a regular basis. Next slide. Slightly different perspective, also bird's eye view from the east. Patrick mentioned the landscaping. All of our sites are extensively landscaped for street-side appeal as well as vehicular screening, and we plan to do the same here in Canton. Next slide. View, bird's eye view from the southwest corner, so this is looking essentially from the back of the building, where you can better see the entry lanes leading up to the pay terminals, the vacuum spaces, customer-employee parking. And then the next slide is one more view from the back. We're also featuring here southern-facing PV solar panels, two electric vehicle chargers for employee use, and not specifically shown here, a water recycling system to minimize our resource footprint. So as I mentioned earlier, maximizing resource efficiency in all aspects of our business, whether it be electric, gas, water, sewer, cleaning solutions, et cetera, is critically important to the sustainability of the business. These are actually all-electric car washes, so just like electric vehicles are becoming more popular, all of our sites are all-electric, so hence, we're introducing the use of solar PV here as well as electric vehicle chargers for the employees. So just in summary, we're looking forward to serving Canton Township with the highest quality auto wash services, and think this is an ideal location for us to provide those services, so.
Okay.
Thanks for the time.
All right. Thank you very much for that, and if you wouldn't, you know, mind being around if in case of some questions or anything? In fact, I have one right off the bat. You mentioned that there's more or less an automatic paying thing. Is that going to be like electronic, you know, flashing your card, or, you know, anything like that, or it won't be people involved, or...
Yeah, we do staff the site. We do have a professional staff that maintain the site and also assist customers as necessary with both the pay terminals as well as loading onto the conveyor and pre-washing vehicles. The pay terminals, maybe if we back up one slide, Patrick, if that's possible. The pay terminals are located sort of in the, I would call it the southeast corner of the entry lanes there. It's a gated entry system, so there are two pay terminals, similar to an ATM-style machine where you pull up and select your wash package. At that point, you can pay with a credit card. The majority of our customers actually have monthly passes or unlimited plans, which are actually RFID-based, so small RFID tags attached to the windshield. That allows customers simply to pull up, the gate automatically lifts, and they can go in and get their car washed as often as they want, so.
Patrick, do we have anyone in Zoom land that would like to address this?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, then we will go to the audience here. Anyone else besides the project sponsor would like to make any kind of comments or concerns? No?
Nobody from the other car wash wants to say anything about this presentation?
Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Zuber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To Patrick's comment early on about duplication, without giving away any trade secrets or anything like any competitive information, is there a formula, let's say per population, that makes you feel that you are successful in an area like Canton that already has within, you know, two miles of you, a couple of car washes? Is there something that you would share on that?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. We do look at a lot of factors, including traffic count, you know, actual drive-by traffic. For example, Michigan Avenue in this area is between 30,000 and 40,000 vehicles a day, so, you know, obviously very, very high traffic count. Population density is also a consideration. Typically, most folks will drive two to three miles to get to their favorite, you know, auto wash, so to speak. And then in addition, you know, competitive activities. So Canton Township is relatively large in terms of the population, and significant traffic count on Michigan Avenue. We're quite confident that the area can support multiple express exterior auto washes, not only along Michigan Avenue, but along some of the other major corridors, which in some cases exist already, and in some other cases, I think, have been proposed, so.
All right, fair enough. All right. Let's start down here. Commissioner Okon, do you have any questions, concerns, comments?
I do not, thank you.
No? Commissioner Singh?
I have a question about, again, duplication, and Patrick, for you as well. You said we have a couple of the car washes in the area. I know we do send notices to the nearby property owners that new location is opening up. If anybody has any objection, do we have a system where we send notices to any of the competing businesses if we are concerned about duplication, how it may affect the other car washes in the area? Are they notified in any way that there is a new one coming up?
Typically, they're not, because the public hearing that we notice, the zoning ordinance and the state law only require within 300 feet, so we stick to that unless there is a very good reason not to, and to go beyond that, that we would do similarly for other businesses as well. I do know that with one particular car wash business that was here roughly about a year ago for a public hearing, there were some other car wash businesses that came out and objected to the use. I'm not sure if they had gotten a public notice, or if they knew just by watching the agendas or hearing about it, but some, oftentimes, they do know, some of the other businesses do know just by watching agendas or hearing about what's coming up on future agendas. For example, the agenda this evening, it has those items that are referred to staff, so even though they may not be before the planning commission for consideration, a lot of times, businesses will look at agendas just to see what's coming down the pike.
Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you so much. Really quickly, I know one of the measures that car wash operators look at is capture rate, right? And days per year open. So if you could briefly talk about days per year, you're going to be open, and then what you're looking at in terms of capture rate, we can talk about over an annualized basis. Thanks so much.
Sure. Yeah, good question. Days per year, we're open 362 days per year, so just closed for three days. Our hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so gives customers a, you know, large opportunity to visit us, both on a daily as well as annual basis. Capture rate varies. We operate sites on secondary streets with traffic as low as 10,000 cars per day, and for example, on the Michigan Avenue site, as many as 30,000 cars per day in Saline. We've found that capture rate isn't necessarily the best predictor of the popularity of a site. Wash quality is a big predictor. In other words, customers are willing to perhaps drive slightly out of their way to obtain the highest quality wash services. Traditionally, the industry has used the rule of thumb of about 1% capture rate on a daily basis, so on a 30,000 to 40,000-car-per-day thoroughfare like Michigan Avenue, it could be 300 to 400 cars. Could be twice that on a particularly busy day, you know, with the, all the right conditions, you know, salty cars, sunny skies, dry roads, for example, could be 1,000 cars per day. But on average, something in the 500 to 1,000-car-per-day range is typical for an express exterior auto wash.
Thank you.
Commissioner Egenberger?
I just had a quick question about, when you were talking about kind of cross-traffic, is this the layout of all your car washes?
Yes, they're all counterclockwise, substantially similar to this. Correct. Yeah.
I just noticed that when you come out of the car wash, to get to the drying area is kind of across that thoroughfare, so that would be where cars are coming in. And do you have signs, kind of warning, there might be some cross-traffic, or have you had any issues with that?
Officially not have issues with that. The drying process is a very effective drying process. It's a high-power heated drying, so the majority of our customers, I would say 95%, simply drive in and drive out. For those who are looking to detail their cars, specifically in the summertime when the weather's, you know, conducive to doing that, it's nice to have some dedicated space where customers can pull off and towel dry their car, for example. But yes, good question. Maintaining site circulation in a continuous, for example, counterclockwise flow is important for easy in, easy out access.
Thanks.
Commissioner Zuber?
Yeah, do you have, Patrick, do you have a more of a close-up of the front of the building? Is there anything in there that's...
That's what's there now. That's what we're trying to get...
It's definitely an improvement over that. I guess my comment, I'm looking at the, I did look at the packet. If you could just zoom in on the lower drawing there, Patrick, that would be, that's kind of what I'm looking at on my screen. And I looked through your packet. Unfortunately, I don't have that on this device with me, but I would, I guess I would love to see a little tiny bit more detail on this elevation, maybe some coins, the Q-U-O-I-N-S, not coins, like dollars, at the corners of the bumpouts, perhaps, or of a different color, maybe picking up on the color around the windows.
Like where the little hand is? Yeah?
Yes, exactly. You know, just some, a little bit more detail. These, you know, I love that you are bringing in the metal roof. I think that's a nice color, but I feel like the elevation itself is really plain, so...
Does this help?
What's that? Oh, thank you.
Just a little closer.
Yeah, that is a little closer. Thank you. Yeah, it's still, yeah, it's just a little...
Still wanting, though.
Blurry, yeah, or blurry. It's a little...
How about a little detail in those dormer areas?
Yeah, or some detail in the dormers. Something, it feels very industrial, almost, and I know you said conservative architectural style, I get that. Like the other, the other, I don't know who the next presenter is, but personally, I thought that the next car wash that we're talking about looked a little bit better than this one, but I'm wondering if you can consider that.
Definitely, definitely look into options.
And thank you for doing all the green things you're doing, the photovoltaics and the...
Solar panels.
Solar panel, yeah, the solar panels and the recycling the water. I mean, these are all great things, and I really appreciate that, so good luck.
Options?
Commissioner Weber?
Just one comment, first of all. I want to compliment you on your presentation, having the layout, I don't know if that goes to your architect or to you personally, but the slide presentation that we got today and your drawing presentation were very, very well done and very complete as far as information. Makes our decisions go a lot easier and that sort of thing. Getting back to the, I hate to keep harping on the whole duplication of services, and I'm not being critical or anything like that, and the reason I'm asking, because we had another party before us last month with another car wash, made the comment that the car wash market, and I'm paraphrasing it, the car wash market in Canton is about to explode. I presume when you guys are doing your studies and all that, you're looking at what's coming down the pike, and I know there's another car wash that's about ready to start construction and just over the border in Westland. There's another one in Plummottown or Livonia that's over on Ann Arbor Road that's about to get started. I assume you, I have to assume you've done all your market studies and know what's coming, and feel that you will be able to sustain your business in this competitive marketplace?
We have, and I would agree with the statement made last month, planning commission, that there's a significant opportunity in this market, so...
What is, can I ask, if you know, and I would ask the next party who's coming up with the other car wash, what's going on in the marketplace right now that is causing such a growth in the car wash market?
Our experience has been the popularity of unlimited memberships, so monthly memberships, much like a fitness club, except for your vehicle, makes it very convenient for the customers, both in terms of the simplicity of the transaction onsite with the RFID tag, as well as the psychology of not having to watch the weather to determine when to wash your vehicle. Just makes it very convenient, cost-effective, and simple for customers to have a clean vehicle all the time.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Charia?
Thank you, and I appreciate you being mindful of the environment and being green. Just to harp on the same topic of excessive duplication, Patrick, has there been ever a precedence where the criteria of excessive duplication was ever applied by the commission on any of the cases in the past? on any of the cases in the past?
I can't recall where it has been. And I think part of that is, in a lot of areas in Canton where we've seen a lot of commercial growth, like on Ford Road and Michigan Avenue, duplication is fairly customary. I don't know of any other communities that have, for example, two Walmarts and two Home Depots, two Targets, two Coles, and...
Forget Kroger.
Yes, two Kroger. And I'm sure I'm leaving out a lot of others as well, where we do have that because we're a community of probably over 100,000 by now. And at the last census, we're the ninth-largest community in the state. So there's bound to be a lot of duplication throughout the community. And it's always been difficult of whether something is excessive because usually when there's an applicant that comes forward, they have some market data that they've come in with. They know the market, they're experienced in their craft or their trade, and they know when the right time is to build. It gets a little bit easier when it's a franchise or a chain because there's a methodology, and sometimes that's proprietary data where they know when the right time is to build something. Sometimes it's harder if it's not a chain and someone is doing it, maybe not without all the market data where the scrutiny may be a little bit higher, whether it's because it may not be in a place in Ford and Michigan where there's the traffic counts or where there's similar services or an apparent demand for the service.
Thank you.
I have to believe that's kind of a hard standard to apply, too. I mean, given, like Dawn said, Commissioner Zuber said, you know, we have multiple pizza places, multiple Walmarts, multiple grocery stores.
Hamburger places.
You know, who are we as a body to say what's too much? I mean, that's like, to your point, there's, we have to assume that these people have all done market studies.
How many dentist's offices?
Exactly. They know, before they invest their money, we, I have to believe that they have done their research to say, okay, this is the place to go. So I just feel that that's a hard standard for us to apply to business in general. You know, market forces kind of dictate that a little bit.
Well, for my own thoughts, I always depend on free-market penciling, you know? The people put together their own math. And, you know, we're not God up here. You know, we don't, all we do is we give you the space and we give you the appropriate zoning, the appropriate areas to work in, and then we let the market take place. And so when these come onboard like this, sometimes it brings to mind a question. But your project is very interesting because I, you know, along with Commissioner Zuber's comments, and she's an architect, I'm not, but I agree with her, your facade just needs a little sprucing up. So if you could work with staff if we approve this, you know, maybe put a little bit of detail right in the, you know, corner of the dormer sections and, like she says, the coins with a Q along the protruding parts. But aside from that, I like the look that I would see going along Michigan Avenue. And I like the fact that the business end of things is on the other side of that. But I have a question for Patrick. So this parcel is very long. It goes back a ways. And aside from having at least 25% open space, which I know they comply with, the opportunity along there is to sell parts of that parcel off to other businesses. I don't know if that's an intent for your business or not, but I just wonder from Canton's standpoint, is that a likelihood? Because they're not going to use all of their parcel.
You're talking about the remaining property to the south?
The remaining property to the south.
Because there's a driveway into the back of it, so I meant to ask about that, too.
Yes, that is something that there's the potential for farther south. I don't know what the environmental conditions are farther south, and I know it's heavily wooded, but whether there's wetlands or other conditions that may or may not be conducive for development. But that area is zoned C3 for regional commercial. There could potentially be some, a future commercial there. And for that reason, the drive from Michigan Avenue is designed to potentially extend farther south so that it could serve more than one use. So on the screen here, where that drive terminates, right here is on the south side of the site, there is some space. We've recommended that they nudge the dumpster over a little bit to allow for a future continuous drive. But there would be the potential in that case where they could have a multi-use access easement drive where there could be another user to the south that would use that. And again, it's zoned C3, so it would be some commercial use in that district. At that point, we may be looking at whether that use to the south would have access to Beck Road also, or if it would just keep that one access to Michigan Avenue. Beck Road in that area is gravel, so it would probably be the preference of both businesses to keep the access off of Beck and onto Michigan only.
Well, I think the car wash might like it if people drove up and down Beck Road. I'm just saying.
I'll let them speak to that.
Maybe you could put another car wash back there.
Yeah.
Bite your tongue. So you're probably aware that Canton has gone through some things regarding trees and trees being removed. So I noticed on your tree inventory list that you've got 20 trees to be removed, and 16 of them are rated good. Is that because that's what is needed to make the building happen?
Greg Heim is going to speak to that.
Yes, the majority of those trees are actually along the, I'm sorry, I'm Greg Heim. I'm the engineer from Vance and O'Brien that prepared these site plans. Along the original property line here, basically up most of the way up the site, that's where the majority of those trees are. They're rated as good, meaning that they're healthy. Many of them are not preferred-type trees.
Okay.
Cottonwood and whatever.
I was just curious, when I looked at your list there, that's all, the majority of the to be removed are, they're rated as good. And like you said, you gave a definition that's not exactly what I want in my front yard, in other words.
Right. And it's, the whole site that was vacant is covered in lots of brushy invasive undergrowth stuff that needs to be removed as well. But the back portion of the site actually has a large wetland area within it, which limits the development in the future, but there could be a small development in the future.
Okay.
There would be access to Beck Road if needed, so...
Okay. Well, we'll deal with that if that comes, right? I had a curious question when I looked at that because it's like, I know you're not utilizing a lot of the property. Well, I like your project, quite honestly. I think it'll be good for Michigan Avenue, and I'm all for it. Were there any further comments or concerns from the commission?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Help yourself.
All right. I move to recommend approval of the special land use for an automobile wash establishment use on parcel numbers 71-128-99-0005-702 and 71-128-99-006-703, as illustrated on the special use plan, I'm sorry, special land use plan, as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to specific design criteria noted by staff to be addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, and subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Vote. Oh, okay. Could you repeat that? I didn't catch the last part of that. Just kidding you, just kidding. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Zuber, would you, well, any further discussion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes for me as well. And I guess you would proceed from here, Patrick, to the trustees, right?
Yes, it'll be on the Board of Trustees meeting, most likely on April 26th. We'll follow up with the applicant on that for sure, but I think it'll be the April 26th meeting.
Okay, very good. Good luck. Our second agenda item is also a car wash where we're considering special land use. This property is located on the east side of Hagerty between Ford Road and Sherry Hill, and that proposed use, as I said, is an automatic car wash. Patrick, could you give us more, please?
Sure, thank you. Like the previous site, this site is also in the C3 regional commercial zoning district where car washes are special land uses. So by now, we're all familiar with the requirements for the special land use in the C3 district. For the orientation of the bays that we dealt with with the previous car wash, we don't have the same issue here because it's not on a corner lot. Their bay doors face north and south. That north bay door faces an access drive, which is, the other side of that is the BP gas station. This site is east side of Hagerty Road, south of Ford, not too far south of Ford, but it shares an access drive that accesses the BP, a bar and restaurant, and a hotel. So it's a multi-service drive that they'll be accessing. And there will not be any curb cuts off of Hagerty Road. So the curb cut on Hagerty will be removed, and all the access will go through that access drive. So we'll be achieving some of the goals of trying to minimize the number of curb cuts on our busiest roads. There is an access between the subject site and the hotel site that's to the east, and there's an existing recorded access easement between the two sites. So we recommend that if there's a recommendation for approval that it include a condition that there be written consent to remove that easement between the car wash site and the hotel site prior to the site plan application. And that may be something that's mutually agreeable between both uses as the compatibility is questionable in terms of access. Many of the items, like with the previous application, the special land use plans include more details than are required on a typical special land use plan. So a lot of the items that we address in our staff report are related to the site plan review, but are helpful at this juncture so that we can look at the compliance of the plans and items that need to be followed up with at site plan review. The architecture of the building is at least 50% masonry. There's a mix of concrete masonry units and stone veneer. We recommend that the concrete masonry unit be a smooth face and half-high block that has the appearance of brick. For the landscaping and screening, the landscape plan has been submitted, and it's designed to comply with Article 5 of the zoning ordinance. But that's something that we'll deal with more during the course of site plan review. Finally, the special land use standards of Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance, we find that these standards have been met. And with the last standard that deals with excessive duplication, there's not as much of a concern with this one because the closest car wash is about one and a half miles east on Ford Road in the city of Westland. We're not aware of any others that are nearby in the area. So with the volume of traffic that we typically see on Hagerty Road and Ford Road, I think that the market data would probably justify the need for a car wash in this area. Also, the Mr. Car Wash is a franchise car wash where they have other locations, so they may have some of that same market data that a lot of chain businesses have when they look for site selection and where and when to locate. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the automobile wash special land use on the subject parcel, as illustrated on the special land use plan for the reasons stated in our analysis, subject to the items noted in our review being addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, including written consent to remove the access easement between the subject site and the parcel to the east, and subject to all state, county, and township requirements. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? All right, come on up, sir, to the podium. And while we're doing that, we do need to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Ocharia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome.
Thank you.
Who are you?
So my name is Chuck Hoy. I'm here from Naderfeld. We are civil engineers, land planners, landscape architects. So our client is Mr. Car Wash, and I'm here representing them tonight. And from the sounds of it, it sounds like the people of Canton should have the cleanest cars in all of Wayne County. So no excuses for having a dirty car. But as Patrick mentioned, you know, this particular site is a little bit immune from any of those sort of concerns, you know, in that, you know, from our fellow applicants, we are about 7.3 miles away. And from the nearest car wash, it's about a mile and a half away, and separated by 275 as well. So...
There's one to the west also.
There is one to the west. I'm not certain the distance of that one, but I think it is a little ways. It's more than a mile and a half than the one is to the east. Now, I came here from Grand Rapids, so over there, we are familiar with the Mr. Car Wash setup. You know, I had come in here thinking that you would be as well, but our client reminded me that this is sort of their first foray into this market. So, you know, as our previous applicant had mentioned, you know, they sort of subscribe to the, or the subscription model is something that is their business plan. And so they, you know, that is their business plan. And so that's, you know, quality is what their customers recognize. And so that's how they plan to move forward with them. So this special land use is a former restaurant site, and it was rezoned in July of 2021 from the C4 to the C3 zone district, which does allow by special land use the auto wash. So the nearby uses, right, are public storage to the west, Medical Plaza to the south, the La Quinta Inn to the east, and the gas station restaurant to the north. So we're compatible with those uses. And our access, as you can see, is off of the access road and not off of Hagerty Road. One of the things that we should bring up is there has been discussions from MDOT for some improvements that they're going to do, certainly on Ford Road, but on Hagerty Road as well. My initial discussions with them, even though they weren't going to sort of commit to anything but some boulevard-type setup that they were going to do on Hagerty, they wouldn't commit to how far south they were going to go, but they did say that it would somewhat impact our site. So that's actually of benefit. They were actually happy to hear that we were not going to have a direct access off of Hagerty Road. So just a little tidbit of information, they weren't able to share anything more. MDOT wasn't able to share anything more with us regarding that. So the use of a car wash is consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically just the future land use identifying this site as general commercial. We're supplied by all necessary utilities, and we meet all the design criteria with regard to setbacks and all of the requirements within Article 6, minimum lot size, layout, the entrances and exits, meaning the 125-foot exit length, the drying facilities, heated exit ramp, water runoff, video monitors. All of that is compliant with the zoning regulations. We did receive some of the comments of the application. I'll just touch on a few of them here that we wanted to make sure to touch base on. Water reclamation. So Mr. Car Wash takes their environmental impact very seriously. They're an industry leader in energy use, and they actually use a dye-free cleaning product. Plastic reduction is something that's important to them as well. And they do have a water reclamation process that reduces water as well as average recycled water at about 30 to 35%. One of the comments, too, on the notes was with regard to the noise ordinance, a reminder that the operations are 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The vacuums are shut down before and after. There's an automatic shut-off for that. That was a specific question. There's an automatic shut-off for that. That was a specific question in the comments. But the vacuums are central units, so the noise that comes from those vacuums is within the enclosures that you see. There's two locations of enclosures that you see on the print. That, those are the only two areas that are, that would be making noise. So we can comply with the noise ordinance for sure. Circulation and parking. There was the comment about the access easement. So Mr. Car Wash is in the process of purchasing that property, and their initial attorney review indicates that that access easement can be unilaterally removed, and it will be done during that acquisition process. One request, I guess I would state, and it's a matter of semantics with any sort of condition of approval, I wouldn't request that that be a negotiation or discussion with the neighboring property. I think if you can just state that that is a condition of, you know, gaining site plan approval, that that be removed, I think that can be done. I just don't know if we need it dependent upon any comments from the neighbor themselves.
So you're saying that the property to the south is in the process of being acquired?
Well, Mr. Car Wash is acquiring the actual property that the car wash is located on.
Okay.
That closing process involves the removal of that easement, so I just want to be careful about any of the condition of approval for special land use or site plan, just in how it's worded.
And then the intent is to remove the curb cut off of Hagerty, right, so that your access to your site will simply be from that drive?
The unnamed access. I don't think that, I don't think that road has a name. I call it the unnamed access road. That's correct.
It's one of those Canton shortcuts that only the Cantonites know about.
Got it. Yes, the only access to the site is from that access road, which would be to the north of this property.
Okay. All right, anything else would you like to add, or do you want to just wait for any possible questions?
No, 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 I can just take questions from them.
All right. First, Patrick, is there anyone out in Zoom land that might like to make a comment or has a question?
I think there were some attendees that were on the applicant's team that may have joined us earlier, but I don't know if they're with us any longer.
Longer there, okay. All right. From the audience, anything, any concerns, comments, anything? All right. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing. All right. Got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Zubor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's start down, let's start down this end. Commissioner Acharya?
Thank you. So in terms of the signage, where is the signage going to be? Is it going to be on the Ford Road side, or?
Well, they do put signage on their building, and if any other signage were to go, it would be on the Hagerty Road side, I would think.
Okay. So would there be any signage, is there any signage proposed on that access road that gets you into the car wash? Because that's the access road that goes to the hotel, to La Quinta, right? So there's going to be confusion how to get into the, because if there's going to be a signage on Hagerty with no access, how is the customer going to get to know about it unless he's a regular customer?
True. So I don't know that we indicated on the plan where any signage would go. I would suggest probably the corner of the access road and Hagerty might make the most sense, if sort of the upper left-hand corner.
And at the time of site plan review, where more specific details are required, a signage plan will be required there, and the zoning ordinance has provisions for directional signage in multi-tenant commercial sites.
Thank you. That's all from my side.
Okay, Commissioner Weber?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Zubor?
I like the building design. I assume this is a part of the, sort of the corporate package. So I think this is, it's exciting. I like the colors. I like the materials. I like the massing. So, nice job.
It's not Victorian, right?
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's Victorian. I'm sorry.
They did make a few tweaks. You know, this is a little bit different than, this isn't just right off the shelf of their typical plan. You know, we read the ordinance, and they wanted to be compliant. So slight changes, but this still sort of, still fits their corporate mold, and so I think that...
In this age of political correctness, any problem with gender identification with just being called Mister?
No, I hadn't thought of that.
I thought it meant the misting sprays.
Of the spray, yeah. Anyway, I just thought I would throw that out.
We'll go with that.
Yeah, and I have a suggestion that we rename that little access drive Greg Green Drive. I mean, because you're Greg Green. My thought.
Thank you.
I guess if Warren Evans can have a terminal named after him, I can...
There you go.
After me, right? Except I wasn't elected. Commissioner Egenberger?
I think it looks nice. I think that, I'm a little embarrassed. I think my car's dirty right now, and obviously, there's no excuse for it.
I know mine's dirty.
And I'd like to think that I'm deeper than worrying about how traffic flows go, but I'm noticing that again on this one, that this one looks even more confusing in terms of when you come out of the, and I think, I know I have anxiety when I come out of a car wash, like, oh, is this the time where I go forward? Is the car behind me going to hit me? So I'm always thinking about this. But at this, on this one, when you come out, there is traffic heading right towards you to get to the vacuum. Do you have signs, yields, I don't know, anything that says, hey?
Yeah, so we talked about a couple of things, pulling some of that landscaping back where you see proposed landscape boulder typical, just making sure that that's low. That may appear as though it's tall and in the way, but keeping it low or just pulling it back slightly, so you have that visual. I mean, you'll be able to see vehicles coming that way, right? And that would be for traffic that would be just coming into getting to the vacuums, which is, you know, I can't tell you what the percentage is, but maybe most people would run through, you know, a wash first. Anyway, so there's that. And then there is the idea of the cars coming from the vacuums, of people pulling out and wanting to go left after they've gotten a wash. Same thing there. We talked about bringing this structure back down a little bit and tightening that up a little bit, too, just to make sure that there's not, you know, some of those concerns at that intersection, we'll call it. And then, yeah, don't come bombing out of the turn after you've done your car wash. We know you're excited about it, but...
I'm always afraid that the car behind me is coming out, because, you know, you don't have any choice. When you're done, you're done. You got to go.
Yeah, and, you know, we don't expect that there's like a long queue of, you know, cars trying to get out of that intersection. There's really going to be no reason for anybody to kind of block their way. They should move pretty quick.
I like the idea of keeping everything low, so there's no issue of not seeing a car coming. Thank you.
Commissioner Watkins?
I say we ditch the Canton Planning Commission and become a car wash consulting firm. How about you guys? Real quick, so same questions apply to this particular, and I don't know if you're able to answer them. I understand that you're the architect, but just trying to get some idea of, you know, days open, capture rate. I don't know if you have any of that information at all by way of the business operations. I'm on the development side. I'm interested in this particular site's choice. That's one part of it. And then I'm looking at the elevations. This is part two of my question. We're good on the Mr. Signs. Are they LED signs? Patrick, we're good on height there, aren't we? East elevation as well as north and south?
Yeah, they did meet the requirements for the height when we looked at the height. The zoning ordinance prohibits roof signs, but as long as they're on the side of a constructed wall, they're okay in terms of the sign heights. And usually, after the site plan review and site plan approval, the sign ordinance is administered by the building division, so they will review it for dimensions and illumination, things of that nature. So when they look at it, and perhaps at site plan review, when we have specific dimensions in a sign package, oftentimes, we'll send that to the sign inspector at the building division just to have him take a look at it, see if there's any initial comments. So in this case, at the point of site plan review, we may, and we can get feedback on, you know, the number of signs. It's usually the square footage of total sign area rather than the simple number of them.
Yep, there were quite a few. I just want to point it out, just as we get down the road in the development process. And then I'll just, I'll kind of defer to the par de in my question. I don't know if you can answer it or not.
Yeah, so, you know, we're the kind of land planners for them. We're not the business end of it. But they were kind enough to share some of their data with me. So it sounds like 95,000 in population within three miles, 65,000 a day on Ford Road, and 20,000 a day vehicles on Hagerty Road, which should be more than enough to substantiate a car wash at this location. So, yeah, it meets their criteria. It meets their data. I can't say too much more than that, but... Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Singh?
No questions. Congratulations. Nice project.
Commissioner Okon?
I'm good, thank you.
The only thing I have to say to this is it looks like a good job, and I'm, again, depending on market numbers that help you be successful. We want you to be successful if you come to Canton, and I think that you probably will. The only thing that I say is that's a lot of Misters in what we see in the elevations. But I have the feeling that what you had pointed out, Patrick, about the total square footage of signage will be under review, if we get to that point, right, in terms of how many of those signs would be able to be mustered in that design?
Yes, and oftentimes, if it's a, if it's a corner building, there's often a sign bonus for additional exposure around the corner. In this case, there's a common access drive, which I think often does get the corner bonus. So there may be some additional sign area that's entitled to this particular car wash on account of being on a corner with a major road and an access drive. So those square footage items are calculations that we can run during site plan review, and then it'll just be up to the applicant how they allocate that signage.
Now, I believe that that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that that site is within the Downtown Development Authority District, correct? Which means that you'd be subject to any ground sign requirements, which the district has those big community-type signs for several businesses. Has that been approached in terms of what they can and cannot do as to ground signage?
Yeah, if it's a multi-tenant, they may. They would need cooperation from other business owners to make a joint application, and they would have to meet certain either lot area or building square footage thresholds to have a multi-tenant sign. They could do it. They would just need cooperation from other adjacent businesses, which they may want to because it's this particular parcel that has the frontage, that has the entitlement to the sign. So a lot of times, it's up to the business with the frontage, unless there's some other legal arrangement that they all join in on some multi-tenant sign, which in this case, I don't think there is. But that's something that they would have to explore during site plan review if they wanted to.
All right, I think it's a very healthy project. I like it. Do you have any other comments from the commission? Anything?
I have a question, just to clarify what you said about the easement, because our model motion before we actually make one, it just says including written consent to remove the access easement between the subject site and the parcel to the east.
Yeah, so my only concern is consent from the neighboring property.
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer, but there's a question of whether it even requires their consent. There are some easements that are just unilateral, that you can just abandon and say, we no longer, because if you're the benefited property, again, I'm not a lawyer, but if you're the benefited property, you potentially could just abandon the easement and not have it in place anymore. So my only concern is the consent of the neighboring property and whether or not that's the appropriate language to have in the, in the condition of the approval.
Let me take a stab at a motion, then.
Right ahead.
Ready? Okay, I move to recommend approval of the special land use for an automobile wash establishment use on parcel number 71-050-99-0009-003, as illustrated on the special land use plan, as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to specific design criteria noted by staff to be addressed and corrected at the sign of site plan review, including removal of the access easement between the subject site and the parcel to the east, and subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Then I support it.
Awesome.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Egenberger. Any further discussions? Seeing none? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Certainly.
On your motion?
Certainly. Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Good luck to you. And so they go also to the trustees. Now, is any of the things that are up in the air, do they have to be resolved before they go to the trustees, or just before they would come back for a site plan?
With regard to the easement, that's something that they can resolve before the site plan. That condition would just carry forward from the board into site plan review, so that will just be a to-do item for them to resolve before the site plan process.
Okay, and how about the signage issues that we discussed? Would that be something that they need to have? I would like to know that, you know, if, when the time comes, that that's settled.
Yeah, definitely during site plan review. We'll note it in our report that the signage will be required to comply with Article 6A of the zoning ordinance, and that'll be something that'll be verified during site plan review.
All right, good luck. Our next agenda item, this is a site plan review. We're considering a seasonal sales permit for Home Depot on Michigan Avenue. This located north side of Michigan Avenue between Canton Center and Back Road. Seasonal sales do include outside displays. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. The proposal this evening is for the Home Depot on Michigan Avenue to have an outdoor seasonal sales permit. That will be 60 days. Technically, it's two consecutive 30-day seasonal sales permits. And seasonal sales permits are subject to planning commission review, except in certain cases. And in this particular case, at the planning commission meeting back in 2020 on June 15th, so about two years ago, the planning commission adopted a motion that allowed for staff approval of seasonal sales permits, as long as there was no change from one year to the next with the outdoor seasonal sales. And the reason was that Home Depot, actually both Home Depots and Lowe's about this time of year would come to the planning commission, and they would ask for the same outdoor seasonal sales that they had the year prior. And so based on the number of applications and just the monotony of getting the same application every year for these particular seasonal sales, the planning commission adopted a motion basically stating that in future years, staff can approve the seasonal sales for their permits unless there's a change, or unless there are some code enforcement issues that require the item to be brought back to the planning commission. So with that said, back in 2021, the Home Depot had proposed the same plans that they were approved for in 2020, so we administratively approved that seasonal sales permit. In 2022, there's a slight difference, and that is that there's a proposed outdoor storage of assembled wheelbarrows. And specifically, I can scroll down, just a visual image of what it would look like next to the adjacent doors. It wouldn't be blocking any of the accessibility. It's just basically corrals where wheelbarrows could be stored and assembled. So that is really the only change in this seasonal sales permit. The other items that they proposed to have, which they've been approved for in 2020, 2021, and in previous years, are for areas of live goods, bagged mulch, topsoil, things of that nature that occupy parking spaces temporarily. So the proposed plan for the wheelbarrow assembly and storage has been reviewed by the fire department and building inspection service. the fire department and Building and Inspection Services, and their recommendation is for approval. And the items will have to be removed once the approval period for seasonal sales is over. So with that, our recommendation is approval of two 30-day seasonal sales permits for live goods tables, plant racks, storage of mulch, soil and sod, and assembled wheelbarrows as shown on the plans. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Is there a project sponsor here for this project? Come right up, sir.
Good evening, I'm Chris Leonard, the current store manager at the South Canton Home Depot. Been at Home Depot about 26 years, about 10 years of those as a store manager. Been at the South Canton location for about three months now. And to your point, my understanding is that this permit is typically kind of grandfathered in and approved each year. The difference this year with the assembled wheelbarrows is really in relation to supply chain demand and an anticipated 80,000, a lack of 80,000 trucks during season. So as a retailer, we're really front-loading in heavy on the front side of the season and trying to really be creative and also respect the community as well, too, to make sure we can secure inventory during season. Obviously, the weather's not cooperating with us either at this point, so.
About that, sir?
Every day, we pray.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any questions from the commission? I'm just going to open up the floor for this.
Are the assembled wheelbarrows going to be, like, secured by those frames, or how would those be used?
Yeah, so they will stack upright, they'll stack in front of each other. To the commissioner's point, there'll still be a walking lane there as well, too, within the corrals.
I have a question for you. And, okay, all due respect, I'm not happy with a lot of the material storage that's outside of your store. Now, I know that you've only been there for three months, but what I saw a couple of days ago is absolutely atrocious. When we first approved Home Depot going in there, the stipulation there was that there would be no material storage to the rear, that would be to the north side of the building, except that that needs to go in that day. You have, you know, basically the day to get it inside. I went, drove through there a couple of days ago, and the entire backside and side, on the west side, totally, totally stacked up with materials. Any reason for that?
The way that our system orders, it orders automatically, and in anticipation of sales, particularly in the Midwest market, it's very difficult to anticipate sales and to secure those trucks. So a lot of times, those truck contracts are proactively agreed to, and that inventory is scheduled to come in. So spring is always very tricky in the Michigan area, so.
We try to be understanding about that, but, you know, I'm hoping that that's a very temporary scenario there. I mean, I know that coming spring and summer, you're going to have some stuff that's stacked up on the west side, okay? Bags of mulch, et cetera, et cetera. But not on the south side, because the south side, or the north side, that faces the neighborhood that's there, and it's very visible. And so that was the reason why the stipulation was there, that unless it was loaded that day, it was not to be stacked back there. So I just want to bring that to your attention, because for us to approve this, I mean, it's getting kind of ridiculous. We might as well not approve anything, and let's just let everything just be hanging out outside. But we would like it to be a presentable place, and I drive back there, and I'm sure a lot of other people do, as a shortcut to stay off of Michigan Avenue, quite honestly. In fact, I go behind your building to go to Bob Evans, or even to Wendy's back there, because once you know how to maneuver back there, it becomes very simple. So, you know, I would just urge that that be something, regardless of what happens tonight, which I'm sure will be approved, you know, I would like to see that as a priority of yours to get that stock inside the store instead of outside the store.
Of course, yes, sir.
Other comments or concerns by commissioners? Anything? Do I hear a motion?
Sure. I move to approve two 30-day seasonal sales permits for Home Depot at 45900 Michigan Avenue, parcel number 129-99-0001-701, commencing on May 5th, 2022, and ending on July 3rd, 2022, for live goods tables, plant racks, storage of mulch, soil and sod, and assembled wheelbarrows. Those are, that is hard to say. Wheelbarrows, as shown on the plans. I also move to authorize staff to reapprove renewal of the permit in subsequent years if there have been no violations or compliance issues, and the future plan does not change in any way.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber. Clarification on that stipulation, that the staff can approve if there's no changes to this, correct? So going forward, if they're not going to make the area larger, or if they're not going to display more goods than what was anticipated this time, that's what we're talking about, you would be able to go ahead and approve it without it coming to us?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, any other comments or concerns?
Just wanted to know, you know, if this is not a temporary situation, and this is an ongoing situation, the issue that you brought about on the north side, could a citation be issued technically because the permission was granted on the basis that, you know, on the north side would be free from stacking, the material storage?
Yeah, that's something that we can discuss with our ordinance enforcement division. We have several ordinance enforcement officers, and each officer has a different area of the township. So each ordinance officer has a unique set of geographical expertise, and we can reach out to ordinance and just ask them, you know, what their issues have been in this area in terms of outdoor storage and things of that nature, and they may have some history on that as well. So we can contact them and discuss in more detail what's been going on and how we can get to a point of compliance.
Canton's divided into quadrants, and I think that's quadrant four.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and good luck to you in your sales, and good luck to you in the future.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Welcome to Canton.
All right, our next item is very similar to that, but it is for Lowe's. We're considering a seasonal sales permit. This location is the north side of Ford Road between Sheldon and Morton Taylor. Patrick, could you give us some detail there?
Sure, this is a very similar request to the Home Depot on Michigan Avenue, both in terms of the outdoor materials that are being stored, as well as the same terms at the June 15, 2020 meeting, where the planning commission also allowed for this Lowe's to have administrative approval in future years, as long as there were no changes or no ordinance violations. Similar to the Home Depot over on Michigan Avenue, this Lowe's had no changes in 2021, so their 2021 plans were approved administratively. The current 2022 plans have some changes. They include the following two changes. First, there's additional storage of mulch and soil in the remaining 15 parking spaces adjacent to the west side of the Garden Center. I'll pull this down a little bit so that we can see. So this whole row of spaces adjacent to the Garden Center proposed for temporary pallets, housing mulch and soil. The second item is a tree and shrub corral east of the Garden Center, which will be located in a large concrete sidewalk area adjacent to the building. That will not block the fire door or extend to the fire lane. And specifically, it's this large concrete area that is east of the Garden Center, and it's a large, open area, it's pretty underutilized, so it makes it a good location for seasonal sales, as long as it's not blocking any doors or accessibility or fire lanes or anything like that. So our recommendation would be that there's at least a minimum sidewalk width of five feet that's maintained between this tree and shrub corral and the fire lane itself. The approval of this seasonal sales is recommended by the fire department and Building and Inspection Services, subject to the conditions for allowing for minimum accessibility. And so with that, our recommendation is for approval of two 30-day seasonal sales permits for live goods, plant racks, storage of mulch and soil, and a tree and shrub corral, as shown on the plans, subject to a minimum sidewalk width of five feet between the tree and shrub corral and the fire lane, and subject to any conditions required by the fire department and Building and Inspection Services Division. Looks like I duplicated that, so that would be the end of that proposed motion. And same as in the model motion to, for the planning commission below, is in that model motion, after Building and Inspection Services Division, there should be a period and then the motion ends.
Well, if I get to make the motion, I'm reading it twice, just for fun.
You. Okay, so any discussions? Well, is the project, is, I want to hear from Lowe's. Would you like to come up, sir?
Good evening, my name is Don Stumpf. I'm the store manager of the Lowe's in Canton. I've been at that location since roughly Labor Day of last year, been with Lowe's for several years, and I appreciate everybody's consideration and Patrick's assistance in helping me with some of this navigation so far this year. It's the first time I've done this in Canton, and we worked really hard on my team to try to, you know, this is my PowerPoint, I'm not an architect or an expert, but tried to make sure that we complied with all of the ordinances that we were able to review and be in compliance with all of the necessary requirements. So the, a couple of the things that he talked about, so Patrick, if you could zoom out a little bit to see the storage area. At my location, we try very, very hard to maintain a good neighbor motto and make sure we have very clean conditions, and inside and outside of the store, to make sure that we're, we have the right type of curb appeal, that we monitor traffic flows, patterns, and things like that. The reason for the additional storage is obviously like they talked about with Home Depot, the seasonal index of soils and mulch is very, very heavy, obviously. And just as an anecdotal example, this next weekend last year, we sold over 9,000 bags of just mulch products in our location last year. So if we were able to have this additional storage capacity in our location, we're going to be able to reduce the extra commercial freight, flatbed traffic coming to our location. In the past several years, we've had to partner with our Westland location, and they've had to hold a lot of our merchandise and have increased flatbed traffic, sometimes multiple times in a day, coming to our location. So we'd like to try to minimize that, and we believe that with the additional storage capacity, if granted, we'd be able to make sure that we maintain the aesthetic and minimize the excess commercial traffic that we've had in the past. And we wanted to do it the right way with this group, and make sure that we kind of ask for permission on the front side, rather than just hope you don't get caught. We don't, we don't want to do that as being a good neighbor in the community. And then the other part with the tree and shrub corral up in the front corner that Patrick enumerated, that is a very underutilized area in the store. In a lot of our other Lowe's locations, if you've been to them, like right in the middle of the parking lot, they'll have a tree and shrub corral that takes up some space. And we initially talked about attempting that, but we do think it was a better idea to use this underutilized space while making sure we have the proper egress from a fire zoning and sidewalk, so we would tastefully put in trees and shrubs in that area, appropriate for, oh, shoot, appropriate for customer traffic, and we're going to be enhancing the selection of trees and shrubs that we had not been able to have in the past, because we have a very underused, underspaced garden center for the amount of volume that we do.
Yeah, questions from the commission?
I have one, Mr.
Yes, go ahead.
Commissioner. I brought up the Westland store. Is there, are you thinking of this side over here being a drive-through like the, like Westland does in their parking lot? It's just, you still got hauled out to your car and...
Yeah, so this area here will just be really for trees and shrubs, and what we didn't want to do is we didn't want to, like in some of our other locations, customers go across the traffic into the parking lot, make their selection, go back to the register. So in order to help minimize that, if we just use this area, customers can go from the sidewalk safely into the register, and then make their purchase go out to the store. There's not a loading zone of, this will not be soil and mulch and the explosions of things that you see.
Yeah, I was referring to the area, the storage area of the mulch on the, on the west side.
On the side of the building, yeah. So in that middle block section, yeah, that would be open when we are loading customers on the side of the building, over on that side.
So it is the intent for customers to go back there to load their cars with mulch?
Yes, they could drive back there to load pallet quantities, is the intention.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve two 30-day seasonal sales permits for Lowe's at 44080 Ford Road, parcel number 04099-0002-705, commencing on April 12th, 2022, and ending on June 12th, 2022, for live goods, plant racks, storage of mulch and soil, and a tree and shrub corral, I think you mean corral, as shown on the plans, subject to a minimum setback width of five feet between the tree/shrub corral and the fire lane, and subject to any conditions required by the fire department and Building and Inspection Services Division. I restrained myself.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor, and I like coral, by the way.
Oh, yeah, coral's nice.
Support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. All right, good luck with the sales.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's a good thing, because that wasn't going to pass otherwise.
Does your mulch go on sale this weekend? Good. What's that?
Five percent.
I don't think you need to tell anybody, I think the whole neighborhood knows.
You got a nice plug in. All right, all right. Our fifth agenda item of the night is the Quick Pass, surprise, surprise, Car Wash, where we're considering a site plan amendment for the property that's located north side of Michigan Avenue between Canton Center and Old Canton Center Road. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure. In 2021, the planning commission had approved a special land use and a site plan for the Quick Pass Car Wash, located on the west side of Old Canton Center Road, north of Michigan Avenue. So it's north of the 711 area, and there's a common access drive that's located south of the Quick Pass Car Wash. It's an existing access drive. And as you recall, last month before the planning commission, there was a proposal to change the architecture of the building. That proposal to change the architecture has not been continued in terms of anything coming back to the planning commission. So I think it's the applicant's intent to go with the architecture that was originally approved. However, one item in the course of reviewing the revised plans that did come up is the location of the sidewalk. On the original plan, the sidewalk was shown within the Old Canton Center Road right-of-way, and the right-of-way, the road was going to, was shown as being curbed and gutter, and so there's more, more open space in which to plant and to put the sidewalk. However, Old Canton Center Road is a However, Old Canton Center Road is a ditched road, and there's an existing ditch along the west side of Old Canton Center Road. And so the applicants intend to keep that ditch in the Old Canton Center Road right-of-way. So by keeping the the ditch and the stormwater flow in the right-of-way, having the ditched system, based on the width of the right-of-way and the existing condition of the road and the ditch and the space between the edge of the road and where the sidewalk could be, the proposed sidewalk can't be located in the road right-of-way. So what the applicants propose to do is, along parts of the site, to locate the sidewalk on the site itself. And to do that, they would have to record an easement to allow public access on their site on the sidewalk to access along between the the two ends of the sidewalk that end up in the public right-of-way. So the easement part is relatively simple. The more difficult part is that by moving the sidewalk closer inward and into the site, that landscape area that was on the previously approved plan goes from 20 feet down to about 14 feet. And the minimum berm width for a front yard is 20 feet, according to the zoning ordinance. And so the request with the applicant to move the sidewalk, there's not necessarily an action by the Planning Commission that is required to put the sidewalk on the site. That's something that can be administratively done. However, because the berm width is going from the minimum of 20 feet down to below the minimum of 14 feet, that is something that does require Planning Commission review. The Planning Commission is empowered by the zoning ordinance to modify the standards of the landscape requirements of Article 5 of the zoning ordinance if the Planning Commission finds that there's a better alternative to the landscaping and there's a reason for not complying with the landscape requirement. In this case, the applicant is requesting relief from two landscape standards. The first is the minimum width of the front yard berm of 20 feet to lower that down to 14 feet. The second standard is that the height of the landscape berm along the front edge is required by the zoning ordinance to be at least three feet high. The applicants propose to have that two feet high because the berm width is narrower and to keep to keep the topography slope the same of one to three slope, there's no way that berm can reach a height of three feet without a retaining wall. And retaining walls can be difficult to they can be difficult to maintain, they can sometimes become a maintenance nightmare if they deteriorate. Sometimes we are having to chase the applicants down to repair them, so we generally don't require or we don't request a retaining wall unless they're really necessary for the topography. So rather than have the applicants do a retaining wall just for the sake of getting three feet, we recommend approval of the proposed two-foot berm. And the applicants have supplemented that berm with 20 additional shrubs along the front edge of Old Canton Center Road to try to add more buffering and and relief between the site and Old Canton Center Road. Therefore, we think that the alternative is acceptable, and it allows for the existing stormwater in the right-of-way to to stay in the ditched condition, and it doesn't allow or doesn't require any other site changes because this is a pretty tight site as it is, given the triangular nature of the shape. Therefore, our recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment on the subject parcel to modify the requirements of Section 5.03A1 of the zoning ordinance, based on the landscape plan designed submitted, subject to the excess easement for the sidewalk being approved by the Engineering Services Division and the Township Attorney. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here, project representative at all? Come on up, sir. Hello?
Hello, I'm Luke Winger, and I work at Green Tech Engineering, and I'm here representing our client on this project today. So I thought Patrick did a great job of explaining why we're looking forward just to variance. Shifting the sidewalk from outside of the right-of-way to inside of the right-of-way causes that buffer to be 14 feet, as Patrick has already said, which makes our berm height, we're unable to make it three feet tall. So we're requesting kindly requesting a variance to make it two feet high with a 14-foot buffer instead of a three-feet-high and a 20-foot buffer.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Atariah, do you have anything to add?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Weber?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
I have a question. This is mostly for Patrick because we're talking about that sidewalk being jogged and then this this lower berm put in. All of that theoretically would be temporary. If Wayne County came along, you know, let's say sometime in our lifetime and decided they wanted to make road improvements to Old Canton Center, they would they would move that sidewalk, wouldn't they? To within the the right-of-way?
They they might not if the sidewalk is already there and it's not necessary for them to make any sidewalk changes as a result of their project. They may just leave the sidewalk there and not do anything else and just enclose the drain with curb and gutter. If for some reason they had to go onto the applicant's property and remove the sidewalk, our preference would be for that sidewalk to be in the public right-of-way. That way, there's no encroachment on the site, there's no requirement for an easement. It's it's much more simple. But Wayne County may leave it the way it is if they were to ever to come and enclose the drain and put in curb or to add, you know, a center turn lane or widen the road for any reason.
Making an alteration like that, does that pose any kind of liability issues for the the project sponsor at all?
With the sidewalk?
Yeah.
There are other areas of the township where there are easements recorded to allow public access over sidewalks that are on private property. It is something that we would require the Township Attorney to review and approve, and something that is fairly typical with many developments where it's a public sidewalk, where they allow public access through through the site. So in terms of a liability standpoint, I would defer that to the Township Attorney, but things like this are fairly common.
All right. I only I only wondered because I needed to know, you know, who Sam Bernstein's going to go after with if somebody slips and falls on that sidewalk. Just joking, just joking. Come on, everybody, lighten up. Any Commissioners Zubor, did you have any any comments or concerns?
No.
Commissioner Egenberger?
No.
Commissioner Watkins?
No questions.
Thing?
No questions.
Commissioner Okon?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Wow, everybody must be tired. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the site plan amendment on parcel number 71-129-99-0002-710 to modify the requirements of Section 5.03A1 of the zoning ordinance based on the landscape design, ah, sorry, landscape plan design submitted, subject to the excess easement for the sidewalk being approved by the Engineering Services Division and the Township Attorney.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Egenberger. Any further discussion?
Patrick, is this the last meeting they have to come to?
We hope. I'm sure they hope too.
Can you get this thing built already?
Yeah, we need another car wash.
There are going to be three, four before you guys open, I guess.
Yeah, by the time you guys are built, you guys are going to be out of business.
Commissioners Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioners Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, our last agenda item for the
The car wash again?
Gee, Chipotle car wash.
Car wash in Mexican restaurant.
All right, our last agenda item is Chipotle, where we're considering a site plan for property located on the south side of Michigan Avenue and west of Belleville Road. This proposed use naturally is a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. The proposal is for Chipotle Restaurant. It's in front of the in front of the Walmart on Michigan Avenue. This is specifically the south side of Michigan Avenue, west of Belleville Road, and it's one of the outlots in front of Walmart. There's some underutilized parking in front of Walmart, and this is on the, I would call this the eastern outlot. To the east of this is the existing Tim Hortons. And the other outlot, which I'll call the western outlot, which is west of the primary access drive from Michigan Avenue, is a proposed Panda Express, and that one is just east of the existing Panera. At a previous Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission approved plan development amendments to the Walmart PD to allow both the Chipotle and the Panda Express. At the same meeting, the Planning Commission had approved the site plan or recommended approval for the site plan for Panda Express because they had applied for site plan approval at that time, and at that time, Chipotle had only applied for plan development amendment approval. So at this time, Chipotle is proposing site plan approval for the site. They prepared a site plan in accordance with the zoning ordinance, and they're they're pursuing approval, which would be a recommendation by the Planning Commission and final action by the Township Board. The major conditions that were approved as part of the plan development amendment have been satisfied on the site plan. Site plan related items that were noted during the course of the plan development amendment review have been addressed on the plan itself. And when they went through plan development review, many of the details that were on the plan development plan itself exceeded the ordinance standards in terms of the information. So many of these design standards, like landscaping, lighting, architecture, were shown on the plan development plans beforehand. So they've they've enhanced some of the plans in terms of a few additional details and a few additional modifications to comply with the ordinance and any of the conditions of approval by the Planning Commission and the Township Board. So based on the completion of the plans and satisfying the conditions that were previously required, our recommendation is approval of the site plan for Chipotle on the subject parcel as provided in the plan documents, subject to the conditions of plan development district approval.
Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. As the project sponsor here, I guess that would be you.
I was going to bet that was him.
Good evening.
Hello.
Michael Gold with Stonefield Engineering and Design, representing the applicant, Canton Township Retail Management, LLC. Patrick did a great job summarizing the site, more or less is the same site plan that's been before you guys for the PDD amendment. A few changes, one of which was requested by city and the commission to close off the northwest access drive, which would give access to the private drive into Michigan Avenue for for the Walmart. So we went ahead and closed that off and then are providing cross-access with the Tim Hortons through our site down to the south. We are requesting a recommendation for site plan approval for the Chipotle. It's a fast food restaurant with a pickup window, no mobile ordering or no ordering will take place within the drive-through itself. It'll all be from mobile order, so it acts as a pickup window. So based off the floor plan, we're proposing 44 parking spaces where 44 are required and meeting the landscaping requirements, lighting requirements. And yeah, would be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Wonderful.
I'm in favor of anything, Mr. Chairman, that has a burrito loading zone.
Say that.
I'm in favor of anything that has a burrito loading zone.
Burritos.
Never seen that on a site plan before.
That's excellent.
Commissioner Okon, you have any comments or concerns?
Nope. Really nice.
Mr. Singh?
No, no comments.
Mr. Watkins?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Egenberger?
No, I'm excited. This is, I think, my first proposed mobile order pickup lane I've seen. It's an interesting idea.
Commissioner Zubor?
Nothing.
Weber?
Just being all serio seriously, what, why is it called the proposed burrito loading zone? What is what is that exactly?
So so the way the pickup window is going to work is you order through an app or online or call ahead, and they give you an estimated time. The app will tell you when your order is ready. Off chance it's not, they'll ask you to pull forward so it doesn't impact any queuing in the property, so.
Gotcha.
They'll bring your order to you.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Atariah?
I'm all set, thank you.
And I'm all set. Is there a motion to be had here?
I want to give somebody else a chance. I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Chipotle on parcel number 71-132-99-0003-701 as provided in the plan documents, subject to the conditions of PDD approval.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sir, Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
That's a yes from me. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much. We're excited.
For the trustees, correct?
Have a good night.
Good night. Thanks for for enduring.
Who supported that motion?
Mr. Singh.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, we have some some stuff to give to staff. We've got, what, five referrals, including a car wash?
A car wash?
Yeah, surprise, surprise.
I've never heard of a car wash.
Do I hear a motion to send these items to staff?
So moved.
Support.
All right. We got a motion by Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Zubor has supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, on the one, I'm just going to refer to staff, and you don't have to answer if you don't have information. The one item is that that coffee shop that they're putting in there in the little strip mall where Saad Meats is, just hot, real high level, what architectural changes are they making?
At the last review that we had, they were adding quite a bit of metal panel to to the front of the building, and if if that's something that we've we've recommended that they not do, but if if that is an option that they want to pursue and they and they would not meet the 50% brick requirement in that case, the Planning Commission can review modification requests from the architectural requirements of the zoning ordinance, and, you know, the Planning Commission can just make a decision based on the information that that's provided for them.
I just curious, I just wanted to, I guess I was more curious if it was some real exotic thing or something like that.
I guess I'll have to go taste it.
It's a car wash coffee shop.
Car wash coffee shop.
It's actually Yemenese coffee.
Oh, okay. We don't have any public hearings to set. Our last agenda item tonight has to deal with the bylaws. I believe we're going to have a discussion on continuing education requirements and some options for satisfying those. Aaron, did you want to handle that?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Included in your packet is a memo dated April 4th for tonight's meeting. So it just gives a little bit of a summary of what we discussed at last month's meeting. So the bylaws, as they were presented last month on March 7th, are are the same. I have just provided some more updated information on the continued education requirement as we discussed. So internally, we discussed the six-hour requirement. That was kind of the the reason that that this was postponed last time, and so I wanted to provide some examples of of opportunities that could be presented to the Planning Commission for them to reach that six-hour requirement in a given year. That email was sent to you on March 22nd. It provided a a number of opportunities that would allow you to fill those hours. Many of them were about an hour to an hour and a half. They were all done via Zoom. Several of them were free, so it made it easy, and many of them were recorded. So if you signed up for it and were unable to attend at that time, you could you would get the link and then you could watch it later at your leisure. So it made things very easy for people with busy schedules or things they need to do. You can always watch those and and take it and absorb that information after the date that it was conducted live.
Could we stop you for a minute, Aaron? So if there is a cost, though, the Township will absorb that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep. You're skipping ahead a couple paragraphs, but yes.
Okay.
No, that's okay. All of the, many of them are free, but anything that would be charged, you you would let staff, either Patrick or myself, know, and we would sign it up for you. So there would be no no cost to to any commissioners out of pocket. It would all come from the Township budget. And we have budgeted quite a bit of quite a bit of funds for continued education for this for this reason. In addition to the Zoom webinars, I also provided some information on the Michigan State University Extension Citizen Planner Program that would complete and satisfy the requirement for the three-year period. So pages two, one and two provide some in-depth So pages two, one and two provides some in-depth information about this. And I'll just go over it briefly, but there are six sessions. They provide fundamentals on the rules and responsibilities, best practices for planning and zoning in Michigan. And this is done, it can be done in one of two ways. So you can do it in person throughout the year and they have, it's usually on Wednesdays, I think, from like six to nine. You can go, you can sit in a classroom, you can engage with other people, other commissioners, there's an instructor, et cetera. Or what most people have chosen to optimize is an online version, which case you could take it at your leisure. You could do three hours here, 15 minutes here. You could do it all in one weekend if you wanted to. But it is up to you on how you want to pace it and you can take that and do it as, as it fits into your schedule. But there are six sessions and they all look at things focused on one component of, of planning and zoning. And so I've provided those to you in this, this cover memo. So and as I noted, the planning division has budgeted funds for the training and the continued education. So anything that would come, that would come at a cost would come to the cost of the township, not to, not to you as planning commissioners. And finally, I, I know that there are a number of, of you who may take webinars or engage in classes or things like that in your own, in your own professional world. So there may be opportunities where you hear about a webinar, you hear something that may be required for, for your own professional enhancement, but that may apply to this continued education requirement. So you don't have to, to do more than what you have. You can double dip sensibly. So that way would make it a little bit easier. And certainly if there's something that you hear about that maybe we don't, that might be something that we as staff might be interested in learning more about or your fellow commissioners might be able to, to learn about a little bit more. And so included in your, at the end of the memo is a recommendation. So we recommend to adopt the 2022 Planning Commission bylaws pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. As I noted before, the Planning Enabling Act requires updated bylaws. The ones that are currently in, on the docket were adopted in 1998. So they are wildly out of date and reference a statute that is no longer applicable. So these updated bylaws would satisfy that requirement and also it goes towards the requirement for RRC certification, which we are currently working towards.
Are these, not that, not that they would have to have the requirements, but are these classes also gonna be attended by the trustees, being that they have to, they approve what we recommend to them? Are they taking, any of them taking these classes as well?
Ask them on to see if they're, they're interested in taking those. But their own bylaws may not require them to, to continue to take courses like this.
I think I saw a reply by Clerk Seagrest, Seagrest, you know, to one of them, one of the things that you sent.
MSU.
And so I just, you know, thought that, you know, we could be on the same page in some instances where they took the classes as well.
Yes, I know a couple of them have, have expressed interest in the continued education, especially related to planning when things come before them, site plan, special land use rezoning, master plan, for example. So they have expressed interest in, in taking some of those courses, yes.
How did the MSU Community Planner Program, the, most of those sessions have passed already that were in your, that were, you listed in the email?
Mm-hmm.
So is that, start over again sometime later this year or what?
They, they run yearly, so there's usually a spring session and sometimes there's a fall session. But the one that goes online is entirely self-paced, so there is no designated time that you would have to do it.
Those ones that are listed, we can go back and watch those.
Are you talking about Citizen Planner? Are you talking about the webinars that I?
No, I'm talking about Citizen Planner.
Citizen Planner? Those, if you wanted to take that at your leisure, you would sign up for the online course. So there's videos that you would watch, you just wouldn't be able to.
There's not a, there's not a date certain that you have to do it.
Well, there's two different ways. If you do it in person, then there are designated dates. But if you wanted to just watch the videos and take the classes, that way you take a, a quiz at the end kind of thing, that you can take at your leisure.
And then the other question I had, it was the issue I had with the bylaws about the, about the citizen comment time. And I don't know if this is right or not, but is this limited to only things that the, the planning commission hears or can someone come up about with anything to bring up a comment that, that they want heard?
You're talking about the public comment?
Yeah.
Adding into the agenda? Yeah, so it's a public, it's a public meeting, it's a public forum, so anyone could come up and say anything. So someone could come up and talk about the roads, someone could come in and talk about a development that either they heard about or they sees is currently in progress or, or anything. It's a public meeting, so they, by law, they have to be allowed to, to speak.
I'll be quite frank, I think that's a waste of time because if it's something about something that we have no authority to comment on or anything, it's just, that, they should be going to the board, not us.
Putting off steam, in other words.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is and it's, it just, and I doubt that we'll have that happen very often, but I'm just saying, it's, it, it seems fruitless for people to come and make a public comment about something that we have no, no capability or jurisdiction to comment about.
And most people. Come to meetings and comment a lot. There are certain people who do, so.
But they comment on what we're talking about.
What we're talking about, yes. I'm just saying it could really get out of control if we, if we open it up.
It's, it's something where I see is just a venting process for, benefit for them because they can't expect any answers from us. We're not prepared to answer anything. So if they come from the audience and they just talk about something out of the blue, they're just venting because we really, we really have no basis for answering any, any concerns that they might have.
But Greg, like, we've been on this board for how long? I mean, when do we really have ever had that? Somebody talk about something that wasn't on the agenda?
I mean, I understand it's not gonna, but we've never had it required either.
We've never had, you never opened the floor up for that, that way.
I mean, I don't know. I don't think that's a big of a deal.
If you wanna sit here for an hour and some night where somebody comes in and starts vending about the roads, that's great. I don't.
Is this, well, let me ask you this, because obviously if the public doesn't know that they could do this, that there will be nobody here. So is this gonna be publicized, that that would be a section on every meeting that we have, if, if, if that's adopted?
It would be part of the, the agenda. So at this point in the evening, if we were, once we're done with this, you would say, okay, is there anybody here for public comment? Here's your opportunity. You have three minutes to speak, kind of opening it like you would a public hearing in that sense. But it is a requirement of the Open Meetings Act to have a, a point of public comment.
But again, it should be limited to the subject matter of the board that's having the public meeting.
Relevant, it should be relevant to the topic.
Whether it's the zoning board, the planning commission, the township board, whatever, retirement board, whoever.
Doug, it may, should, maybe it should be that way, but the Public Meetings Act, the Open Meetings Act.
I understand.
Is that, so I.
I'm picking my turn to that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you understood that this is just the rule, whether, yeah, I understand you wanted that about.
Wait, wait, let me, let me say this and then I'll let you get to yours. So basically what you're saying is that the way we've been conducting our meetings has been contrary to the Public Meeting Acts in that we have not offered that venue?
That is correct.
Where's the township attorney been in all this?
Felt with her about this and she did agree that there should be a public comment, period.
Been the township attorney for a long time. Why weren't we doing this before this?
Through the chair, quickly.
Just asking.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, I was, as a person who's new to this particular board, but has been in front of townships and commissions all over, normally that's, that's been the case. You have a specific public comment about a specific issue and then either at the beginning or the end of the meeting.
I understand. I, I served on, I worked for the city of Dearborn. I was, I was the legal consultant to their planning commission for years. We didn't have it. Now, that's a lifetime ago.
Yeah.
That's thirty years ago now. But, and I, I'll be honest, I've been to many planning commission meetings in my career and I've not, we've not had, I've not been to a meeting where they've had a, just a open public comment, period. Just what I've observed.
With, with, with comment, there can be limits on the time. So for example, if there's a three-minute limit similar to a public hearing, when someone goes to the podium, we don't know what, what they're going to say. They could talk about five different topics and one or two of them may be within the realm of the planning commission. But sometimes until we hear them out within that time, we really don't know either what they're getting at or what they're, you know, what they're looking for from the planning commission. And the planning commission is not, it's not required to have a dialogue with them. Once their three minutes are up, the planning commission doesn't have to engage. It can thank them for their comments and then move on to the next person. If it's at the end of the meeting, that would require them to be present at the meeting, sit through the entire meeting and then only then get to their comments. Oftentimes when we get comments, they're emailed where they're a little bit more productive if they have one specific issue that, and sometimes it's not related to the planning commission, but they think it may be.
I would, I would go along with, with this if we have some strict rules regarding it. In other words, not just a per-person time limitation, but a segment time limitation. Let's say it's 10 minutes where we, we would open the floor for, for just anything and, and make it plain that don't expect any results or comments or anything from the commission on this because that's not our responsibility. I would, I would go along with that. And like you said, if it's at the tail end, you know, they have to sit through the entire agenda in order to get to that, to that, that venue. And then I would have a per-person limit within that 10 minutes or 10, 15 minutes, whatever it is that we decide, that, that, that they can stand up there and vent, you know, and, and then just be done with it and say, thank you very much for your comments and, you know, have a good night. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I, I feel like.
I've been trying to say something for the last 10 minutes, but what I'd like to suggest is that we've had a lot of people get up and comment and just go off and talk 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 at the podium. And we don't enforce the three-minute limit. So I would really like that in the future, we have a timer or something that, that somebody's will, because I started doing it during the last hearing myself, but it's a little bit difficult to, to listen and actually honor, you know, be, be present for people. But, you know, some people just don't give up their, their spot. And I, I think if we're gonna do this, I would feel much more comfortable about it if we did have a timer that's maybe even visible, like in Ann Arbor, if you go to the zoning board of appeals or the planning commission, they actually have a green, yellow and red light that comes up on the podium for people to know how long they've talked. And, and we need to cut them off after three minutes because the meetings can get really long, especially when people want to repeat what everybody else already said. And we're not, we're not stopping them for that. So I think that's true for not only that, that final comment period, but also for public hearings in general.
Okay.
If I may?
Go ahead.
That would be something we can discuss with, you know, the other boards, township board. Do they have an issue with that? Because, you know, we're not the only body that uses this, this, this chamber. So if that's something that would be helpful for them, if not, in the future for, for these meetings, I can write, you know, little scripts on how many minutes they have, blah, 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 and then I will take charge of keeping track of the time and then cutting them off when they get close.
Can't we just establish our own rules, though? For, for this commission, this body?
You would be able to, you, you as the chair would be able to set the time limit for per person can speak however many minutes. Usually it's three minutes. If there is an individual who is representing a group, they can speak up to five minutes. So if it's a homeowners association speaking about something or, or a street, a number of residents, they all don't want to speak together, they collectively can have five minutes. But that's all that they can speak on behalf of their individual group. Does that make sense?
Okay. All right, so what I would suggest is that we decide, okay, a segment boundary and then a per-person boundary.
I don't know if you can do a segment boundary on that.
I was gonna say, it'd be, it'd be hard to do a segment boundary.
I don't think you can do that because then you're limiting, you're limiting public comment. You can do it individually, but not.
Yeah, but suppose there's 10 people here, you're, we're gonna listen to all of them for five minutes?
Yeah, the law says we have to.
But you can set, you can set a per-person and request, you know, if there's a number of people that are still here at the end of the evening, request politely that, you know, I know there's a number of people who maybe want to speak about a certain subject. If someone has already said, you know, addressed your comment or things that you wanted to convey, you know, let the record show that, that has already been said. You don't need to get up and say the same thing.
Well, the way I look at it, because it's open forum, okay, and it's not tied to specific agenda items that we have on that night, they could come up in any month with that same topic. So if they don't fit into that 10 minutes that night, then they wait a month and they come back to, to do it the next month. Because I don't think we should be tied up for however many people that are here to, to, to just talk. I mean, if it's about our items, our agenda items, that's one thing. But if it's about just anything in the township, they need to go to the trustees. Don't you?
Why can't we stop them at that moment when we know that something they're talking about? When we ask them, what is it about? And they say, we wanna talk about this particular problem or, or point and it's not within our jurisdiction or.
I guess what, and that's what we always did. We, we always try to keep it focused. But what Erin is saying is that that's.
Stop them and don't even let them go, keep on talking about it and tell them, hey, this is not the right forum, so you need to go to a different forum, talk about this topic.
But what, what, I think what Erin's proposing is that it, it is the right forum because they chose to come here and spew. You see what I'm saying? And, and so how can we then say, oh, you know, we don't wanna, that's, this is not the right forum for that subject matter? That, that they determine that right by coming here and saying, I wanna talk about this. See, in the past.
As long as it's not a waste of time for them and for, for us all. I mean, it doesn't make sense for them to talk and then we say, okay, thank you, and then you just go away.
They're not gonna get any results from us anyway.
Yeah.
Unless they're talking about a project we have anything to say about.
But, but there have been instances in the past when, you know, spoken to other townships where, you know, certain groups have made it a point to come and just speak because there's a platform to speak and they could even go and speak about international matters or matters that are absolutely, you know, we, we saw that in the township a couple of months back when, you know, folks came and spoke about, folks from California came and spoke about some issues which are not relevant to the township at all, you know. So such things could happen and, you know, it's a forum that could be misused. So we're all for empowering the public, but there has to be some guidelines on what topics could be spoken or at least should be relevant to the township. You know, it can go beyond the township and talk about state matters or national, international matters.
I didn't mean to open up a big can of worms. I just, I just feel, and I guess maybe what has to, and it'll never happen, but what really has to happen is the Open Meetings Act needs to be changed so that it's, I, I just think it's more appropriate that it be relevant to the subject matter of the board or commission or council that you're in front of as opposed to whatever.
Let me ask.
Doug, that would be nice, but that's just not the world.
So.
I mean, this, right, this is just what it is. I'm not sure what we're trying to do, except it's the rules, so we've gotta follow it.
Well, the trustees doing this now.
And I'd like Erin maybe to make sure we're following the law and, and maybe come back with, what are our options? Three minutes for each time, what are our options?
We should enforce the three-minute thing anyway. We should be, we should have been doing that all along.
And nobody gets to get up and speak again.
What are, what are the trustees doing now?
They have public comment periods during their meetings.
Okay, and do they have someone there with a, a clock that's saying, okay, you got three minutes? Do you have, what, how are they handling that?
Well, I, I, I don't see a visible clock, but I know, I know they do time the comments.
Okay. Okay.
And I know, I know there's a public comment period. I mean, like I said, when I worked for the city of Dearborn, city council always had public comment time. It was just not, you just not see it in the zoning board or the planning commission meetings or whatever.
Yeah, because, because, you know, those other commissions are focused on specific areas of the township, whereas the trustees, they have to take it all in.
It is what it is, like.
You know.
How many, how many people usually show up at that board meeting, I mean, for these kind of comments? Every week, too many or?
Depends if there's anything, any hot items on the agenda. Usually there's one to two. I don't know if it's ever much more than that for a meeting where it's, it doesn't really draw a lot of people out.
Mostly they're after that agenda item. It's not like they just come there and start talking about issues out of the agenda.
Well, as Commissioner Charia mentioned, there have been meetings like that where there are several people that speak about matters that are more international, that are not about something that's on the agenda. That, that does happen. And at the board level, they're the elected bodies. So that would be the forum where that's more likely to happen than at the planning commission level.
Probably once a year we'll just say, thank you very much, I guess.
Okay, so getting, getting, okay.
We may as well just, I mean, like Commissioner Edgar Berger said, it's, it's the law. We get to follow it, so.
Okay, so getting to that point, you have a model motion here that I move to adopt the planning commission's bylaws pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Those things are already set in stone for us, right? I mean, in terms of.
A lot more in the bylaws and I'd like to talk about some of it.
Like what?
The, I still have a real strong objection to requiring six hours of continuing ed. You know, and I also, Aaron, you said that if you take the Citizen Planner class, it counts for your three-year term. But that's not the way that this is worded in the bylaws. It's worded in the bylaws that you need to get at least six hours of continued education per calendar year and at least eighteen hours per three-year term, which means both. You can't just do eighteen hours for your three-year term. So in, as I said at the last meeting, you know, we meet, we meet once, maybe twice a month, you know, for a few months out of the year for maybe an average of an hour and a half or two hours. So if we're meeting thirty hours out of the year and you're going to require us to have six hours of continuing ed, that's a big, huge increase in what you're asking us to do for the township. So I just, I feel like, you know, two hours would be lovely. I agree with continuing ed. But, but as I mentioned at our last hearing, as an architect, I'm only required to get twelve hours of continuing ed a year to maintain my professional license to serve on a board where, you know, it's a volunteer position basically. And we meet so infrequently, it just seems like a lot of time. And I get, I can probably get credit for any of these classes that you're suggesting we take towards my architect's license as well. I can do double duty, but most of the, most of my fellow commissioners don't have that potential. And as an architect, I might prefer to actually get half of my continuing ed in architecture and not planning, you know? I mean, it just seems like a big, huge commitment to me.
Yeah, explain again the, if you will, the six hours, you know, where did that come from? I mean, is that, that's just standard among planning facilities or what? How did that come about?
A continuing education requirement is not, is not normal. It is encouraged, but, you know, it's not necessarily a requirement. Patrick and I discussed the hourly requirement and felt six hours was, was appropriate per year or, and I will make that, that was a confusion. I meant six hours or eighteen hours for a three-year term. So that way you could, if you couldn't make your six hours per year, say you only got three because of life to this, that and the other, you're not at risk of losing your seat as long as you make the full eighteen within your tenure, within your term. So if that was unclear, I apologize.
Yeah, that, you specifically said the other thing last month and it's also written that way in the bylaws, that it specifically says and, not or, so.
And at least eighteen hours.
And, six hours a year and eighteen hours per three.
No, it says and at least eighteen hours per three-year term.
But I'm saying it's an and and not an or.
I wasn't here last month, so I just want to make sure I understand. Aaron, you and Patrick sat down and decided that although typically it's just encouraged, you wanted it to be required and that you guys decided that it needed to be six hours? This isn't like a statewide or a national recommendation?
No, it's not. It's something that we.
Are we coming across as not knowing what we're talking about? Which is entirely possible.
I mean.
But, but for you guys to kind of come up with saying, hey, you guys need to do this, I'm just confused.
Yes, we volunteer, we basically volunteer, we get paid a nominal amount to be here about thirty hours a year. And now you're saying you got to take twenty percent of that again and give that too. It's a lot.
Is there, is there a standard in terms of in southeast Michigan? Where did you pull this information and these numbers?
So it wasn't, it wasn't done in a, in a vacuum. It wasn't done just, just Aaron and I just coming up with random numbers. MSU Extension, they have, they have all sorts of model documents. They have model bylaws in this case where you can look at their model bylaws and you, you wouldn't want to use all of it because it would be over twice the length. But there are certain provisions that MSU Extension through the Planning and Zoning Center has in terms of recommended best practices and recommended options. And some of their sample bylaws, they put in their educational requirements, whether it's on a per-year basis or a per-term basis, depending on how a community wants to do it. Many communities in the state of Michigan have had their planning commissions when they adopt bylaws because the Michigan Planning Enabling Act does require the planning commission to have bylaws. So whether to have bylaws or not is not optional. It's a matter of what you put into the bylaws to make it unique to your community and essentially the body that is adopting the bylaws. And many communities in Michigan have adopted those requirements into their bylaws in terms of continuing education. So if you were to do six hours per year or any other number of hours per year, per term, that would not make Canton unique to many other communities in Michigan that have had a continuing education requirement in their bylaws for several years. So it's more of a, it's more of a practice than it is just, you know, the staff planners coming up with some hourly requirement for some reason. And it's not a reflection on the knowledge that the planning commission has. It's more a reflection on, planning is a changing field. It's an evolving field, planning and zoning. There are webinars, there are changes to law, changes to best practices, changes to case law that, that come up and different topics that come up, whether it's technology or whether it's about, you know, species of plants, things like that. And there's a lot of free materials. There's a lot of sources, both statewide and nationally, that present on it. And there's a lot of opportunities to take advantage of those. So that's why, that's why it's there and that's really why it's more unique to a planning commission in terms of the number of things a planning commission is required to know. It's much more than a lot of other bodies. So because it's a changing, evolving field, that's why that continuing education makes its way into bylaws.
Well, when you use the term shall commit, it puts a bit more seriousness to that concept, which I totally agree with that concept because as professionals, you know, as an insurance agent, I had to have continuing education. As, as an architect, you know, Commissioner Zuber had to have, have continuing education and so on and so forth. I, I don't argue, I don't think any of us would argue with that being a potential good thing for, for any of us to do. But when you say shall commit, it puts a, an either/or to the equation. And I think that's where you're feeling the objection here tonight. And when it comes to the either/or, it's like, okay, is six an arbitrary number that was just pulled out of the sky? Or was, what, is there a mathematical formula involved here? You know, we'd like to feel comfortable with something that we shall commit to going forward. And then future, future commissioners will not have this going in. But right now this is being proposed to people that are already doing it and it's kind of rough.
Right, and this year, or I think last year was the first year that the township required that we actually apply for an interview for a position on this board, even to renew our position, which felt kind of like, really? But I did it because I enjoy being here. But honestly, if you guys are, you know, if this, if we adopt a six-year, a six-hour continuing ed requirement, I will probably respectfully have to step away because that's just, you know, running a business, being an architect, you know, it takes a lot of my day and my energy. And it doesn't sound good to me to spend a weekend watching continuing ed, even as fascinating as planning is.
But it's just a recommendation right now, right? We can still vote on it? I mean, we can change it right now.
We can change it, yes.
I'm okay with two hours.
But I, I didn't hear any support for what I said last, last month. So that's why I'm seeing, I'm.
I wasn't here.
No, you weren't. You would have agreed, I know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought we could, we could probably, I mean, if we can make that decision tonight to have the commission staff to go back and, or we can make the change of language tonight and vote on it and we can make it two hours.
Yeah.
I'd like the commission staff to go back and look at it and think about two hours and then have us a chance to mull it over for a month and not vote on it tonight.
For it. What about, what about the other, other part about the, the open comment section? Because I'm assuming that we would want to start next month with that.
Well, that's just an Open Meetings Act rule.
So that's going to be incorporated and that will be an agenda item.
There is limited to three minutes and that's about the only limitation we can put on.
Plus that you guys time people.
I guess you can also do some grandfather clause in it. So the new ones, when whosoever will join again, you can have better or more regulations for them. And I mean, I'll, I'll go for that class. I would like to get more knowledge. But these, the guys who've been on the commission for many years, they may not need six hours of continuing education. So we can come up with some kind of a hybrid plan for people like me who are new. I mean, I'll.
But you're welcome to get as much education as you want, you know?
Yeah, before I even applied to be on the commission, I went and took one of those all-day classes because I thought, wow, I'm going to do one of these. I want to know what I'm doing. So, yeah, anybody, you can always go and sign up for any of them.
Yeah, so, you know, the guys with a lot of experience here, they don't need six hours of continuing education. You've been doing it for such a long time, so two hours is good enough.
Okay, to be continued. So do we need to do a?
So we're basically, we're tabling this, the continuing education segment of the bylaws.
The whole bylaws, I guess.
The whole bylaws discussion. Do I hear a motion to do that?
Motion.
For it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Okon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, with that, do I hear, let's see, we've done everything, right? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
For it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, thank you, everybody.